...2022. We'll note that we have four committee members in the chamber and we have Alder Peckham with us on WebEx, so we have a full complement of the committee today. The first order of business on our agenda is to consider the minutes of our previous meeting from December 20th, 2021, copies of which were in the packets. Any revisions necessary to the minutes? If not, I'll take a motion to approve.
I vote.
Motion from Peckham. Is there a second? Second by Herbst. Discussion? Seeing none? Members in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. Item number two is to consider approval or denial of various license applications, and you have those in your packet for today. We have one denial recommendation by our ordinance. Those individuals are allowed to address the committee. Is Reba Matelski with us this evening? Reba Matelski? Let the record show, Reba Matelski has not attended tonight. Also on your events, list of events to approve tonight, we have one new event, and we asked the airport manager to attend tonight. In the event that you have some questions about the event, it's called Wings Over Wausau, and it is an airshow that is to happen this summer at the municipal airport. Obviously, large-scale attendance is planned for that event, and we figured you may have some questions about the event before you approve the permit. Does anyone have questions? John, why don't you come up and just talk to us a little bit about the event, because there's some exciting stuff on deck at the airport this summer?
I can speak for part of it.
Okay.
Wausau Area Events is actually the sponsor of the event.
Mm-hmm.
The airport is the location. It's going to take place over two days, on the 24th of June, which is a Friday, and there will be a larger-scale event on Saturday, the 25th. So, so far, negotiations have been entered into at DC Airshows, which is an airshow company who is doing all of the legwork for the airshow performers, working with the FAA to make sure that everything is done to standard. They've given us an example of an emergency plan to fill out, which I will be working with Ally tomorrow on.
Okay.
And obviously, we'll be coordinating that with fire and police. In addition to the airshow, which will take place in the afternoon, I believe that we're -- I hate to speak for Wausau Area Events, but I'll tell you what I think I know. We're going to have a car show with it as well.
Okay.
Which will take place in the park, which I call Airport Athletic Park, which is the easternmost park on Lakeview Drive. And then, it's called Wings Over Wausau, so one of the things discussed was that we would feature as our food for this event, wings.
Oh.
So, we're trying to work with local vendors and kind of have a something, I don't want to say it's going to be similar to the Balloon Fest, because it's not going to be at all similar to the Balloon Fest, but obviously, food will be involved, and wings are what we're hoping that it'll be. Think music, fireworks in the evening, model airplanes, aviation displays. Another thing that I'm trying to organize with the airshow people is what we would call a parade of flight. So, when you're an aviation person and you see an airplane fly over, oftentimes, you look up and you recognize the airplane, you know what kind it is, you even know who's flying it. But the citizens of Wausau and the surrounding area may not have as much interest in aviation as I do, but we think that they should know who's flying over their airspace and that sort of thing. So, what I'm trying to do is organize several of the airport tenants to do what's called a parade of flight. So, in groups of three to five, we'll organize aircraft of different types, which will take off, and they will do two circuits around the airport, low passes, plenty far away from the crowd, but we'll have an MC that would describe the airplane, maybe describe the pilot, describe its mission, tell a little bit about it. And after they make two passes, the next group comes through. We're going to do like four or five groups. That typically would take place just before the airshow, but it gives people something to look at, and it educates them about aviation in the airport and how people use the airport. And it'll be anything from small, light planes to the jets that fly out of the Wausau Airport, so people know how businesses are using the airport as well.
Nice. Committee members, any questions for John? And if not, we'll invite our representative from Wausau Events up. I have a couple of questions about the event specifics related to the event.
Also, Tara brought up a good point. We do have to file paperwork with the Bureau of Aeronautics, which I'm in the process of doing. I have had verbal conversations with them, and it looks like this is going to come off without a hitch, but as soon as we get the official paperwork back, everybody will know.
Okay, perfect.
Pete Felisca, Wausau Events.
Welcome.
Thanks.
Couple of questions about the event. Now, John did mention that there was going to be food. Are you also planning for outdoor alcohol?
There will be alcohol, yes. We'll have our bars, just like we typically do.
Okay. So, with the, well, with the last balloon rally even, you know, you'll recall our ordinance has changed in that events that are held at the Wausau Downtown Airport, because the Wausau Downtown Airport is self-contained, are exempt from the fence ordinance. So, you can allow people to take their drinks back to their launchers and enjoy their entertainment without being enclosed, as long as you're at the airport. So, committee members, any questions about that, or about anything else concerning the event? Okay. With that, that was really all I wanted to know, is where you were at with the entertainment and the alcohol part.
Okay.
Oh, go ahead, Don.
What are you going to be having for type of security? Are you going to be having emergency police officers or whatever to patrol to make sure that alcohol is not being abused and so on and so forth?
Sure. So, we actually just met last week on Friday with the police department, and I know Fire Chief couldn't be there, but we did meet, and we talked about a whole range of items. So, we talked about number of officers that do need to be at the event. We talked about emergency police, their availability, planning for that. We talked about traffic flow patterns, so traffic flow out of the event. This will be a little different. In years past, for the balloon and Red Fest, we typically had to get between 50 and 100 vehicles out of there immediately, and that created some logistics for us after each night's fireworks. We don't have to do that anymore, because the airshow itself is based at the airport, does not need to go anywhere. So, it'll be simply traffic going out. So, we talked about traffic pattern of Lakeview. Lakeview only goes to the right, possibly, and then Sturgeon Eddy only goes to the left, the north, so that there's a method of safety there for everyone. And then, from past events at the airport, fire had always had, you know, some questions about how do we get apparatus in, how do you get apparatus out, what have you. So, with not having to have balloonist or whatever having to get in and out of there, we can use that first gate right off of Lakeview as our emergency in, emergency out. We talked about being able to move emergency equipment between the two ends of the airport, all of that. So, there are significant improvements that we can make to make sure that, you know, both police and fire have equal access to both ends of the airport.
And then, your servers will have the, or somebody at the point of entry will have the folks that are of age wristbanded, I assume?
Yes, we will be doing the wristbanding, as you had talked about. With the airport being completely fenced, we're going to keep the alcohol within the fence, fenced of the airport. There will be wristbanding for age checks for that, and there were, no one without a wristband will be served at all.
Okay.
You know, just to tack on a little bit from what John said, this is going to be a much more concentrated event. We're going to start later in the afternoon on Friday. You'll have the airshow, you'll have a small period of time, food and entertainment, and then the fireworks, and then Saturday, we'll start off with the 5K in the morning. A number of events throughout the day, the entire event's going to be family-focused, but then again, very concentrated, where we've got a very tight window of the airshow, and then also food and beverage and entertainment, and then fireworks again. And we, when we had our meeting with the police department, we talked about the safety box that we have to establish for the airport, for the, not only for the planes, but for anything on the ground, and what have you. So, there's a lot of work that's going in this. In addition to putting together standardized emergency plan that the city, the city's asking for, and that we'll work with the county on as well, we also have to establish a FAA emergency plan as well, and we'll be working through that as well. So, we'll have multiple layers of that in place to ensure that everything is handled appropriately. And then, from an insurance standpoint, we have all the appropriate insurance coverages in place for an airshow, an actual airshow.
Excellent. Anyone else have questions at all? If not, I'll accept a motion to accept or deny licenses as recommended by staff. We have a motion by Herbst. Is there a second? Second by Wadinsky. Further discussion? Seeing none. Members in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Unmute Pat, so Pat can vote. And Pat votes aye. Opposed? No one's opposed, and so that item carries. Thank you for coming in.
Yep, thanks.
And that motion then also approves the rest of the events on their list as well, so we're good with that. Okay. Item number three is a hearing. Rent abatement request for the property located at 509 West Knox Street in Wausau. The tenant who's petitioning for rent abatement is Daniel R. Hempsey II, and the landlord is Your Neighbor Realty.
May I speak to you for a minute?
That's okay. We're just starting, so you're just in time.
Okay.
Okay, we'll switch to that. Yeah, good. Okay. And are you Ted Bowman, sir?
What's that?
Are you Ted Bowman?
Yes, I am.
Okay, all right. Do you have any other witnesses tonight appearing at the hearing other than yourself?
My wife will be up here, but I am a little cramped, and so she'll have your staff and I'll have to turn the car.
Okay, all right. And we have Mr. Hempsey available by WebEx. He's out of town currently.
Yeah.
So, once we have Mrs. Bowman, I think she's coming in now, what we'll do is we'll ask the clerk to swear in all of the witnesses as a group. And I believe the city also has a witness from the inspection department that will be presenting as well.
All right. You ready for us now?
Um, yes. So--
Do you want anybody sitting here?
Yep, you guys can have these two chairs up front here, if you'd like. That way, you have a microphone.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Maybe test that microphone and just make sure that that microphone works. That one works.
Thank you so much.
Okay. And our experience with those microphones up front is that you have to hold them fairly close.
Okay.
Yep. And so, when Inspector Melzon comes up, we will actually have him address from the podium. That way, we've got microphones for everyone. Okay. So, yep, you guys can have those two chairs there. And-- Okay. And so, what we'll do is we'll start ourselves off here. Today, we're conducting a hearing concerning housing code violations that are alleged to exist or have recently existed at the property located at 509 West Knox Street in the city of Wausau. As a result of these violations, a tenant at the property has filed an abatement hearing request form seeking to have this committee issue an order to abate rent at that premises for the period that the violations existed. Rent abatement is authorized to be ordered by this committee pursuant to the Wausau Municipal Code following a hearing. This is the hearing on that matter. It looks like appearing tonight at the hearing, we have the tenant, Daniel R. Hempsey II, and we have the property owners from Your Neighborhood Realty, Ted and Margaret Bowman, as well as Inspections Department Inspector Adam Melzon. Any other witnesses appearing tonight for either side? Seeing none, we'll ask the clerk to swear in all of the witnesses as a group.
Can you raise your hand?
Do you need to stand?
Sure, sure.
Okay. I'm old military, I mean.
Mr. Hempsey, can you hear us okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you soundly swear that the testimony you are about to give at this hearing is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth as well as that?
I do. Yeah.
Okay. We'll note that all the witnesses then have been sworn. The violations which are alleged to exist or existed in the past at the property are contained in an order sent by the City of Wausau Department of Public Works Division of Inspection and Zoning dated October 25th, 2021. Have all parties received that notice? Daniel, have you received that notice as well?
I believe I have.
Okay.
If I did, it's probably, the notice is probably sitting at my desk at home.
Okay. This is an informal review hearing. It is designed to allow this committee to hear from both sides, landlord and tenant, about these violations. However, either of you may be represented by an attorney, if you brought one with you, and each of you may call and question witnesses for your side and cross-examine witnesses of the other party. Since this is an informal review hearing, there will not be a lot of rules as far as what information or evidence will be allowed. In this case, we will listen to all testimony that has reasonable probative value, meaning it tends to prove the issue in question. We will not hear testimony that is immaterial, irrelevant, or unduly repetitious. Examples of issues that are not relevant, that the tenant has not paid rent in the past, that the landlord does not agree with the fact that the city has this ordinance, that another tenant in the building has not complained about said violations, that no other tenants in other buildings owned by the landlord have problems in their units, et cetera. Examples of issues that are relevant, the nature, extent, and seriousness of the alleged violations, the length of time these conditions existed at the premises, and how they affected the tenant's use of said premise. Whether the tenant caused or contributed to the alleged violations, whether the tenant wrongfully refused to allow the landlord to make any repairs, and whether the violations were caused by factors or situations wholly outside of the landlord's control. Each of you may present other evidence, such as photographs, bills for services, or other documents, as long as they are relevant. We will need to keep a copy of these for the file, however. As the chair of this committee, it is my responsibility to decide what is relevant or not, and I may determine what is relevant by ending testimony or excluding testimony. The tenant will present their case first. The tenant has a burden of proving to a reasonable certainty by greater weight of credible evidence, which is also known as a preponderance of the evidence, that the landlord failed to correct one or more rent impairing violations by the original due date in an order of the Inspection and Zoning Division. We will also hear from the Inspection and Zoning Division. The landlord will have the opportunity to put on his or her case thereafter, after the tenant has finished and after we have heard from inspections and zoning. It is the landlord's burden to show by preponderance of the evidence any claim that the landlord may have that a rent impairing violation was negligently or willfully caused by the tenant to the tenant's guests, or that the tenant refused to allow entry to the premises, and this refusal prevented the landlord from making corrections in a timely manner. If the landlord makes a showing that the tenant's refusal to allow entry prevented the landlord from making corrections, the tenant has a burden to show that the refusal was reasonable under the circumstances. Either party may present evidence on the nature, extent, and seriousness of the violations, the length of time the conditions existed, and the extent to which the violation deprived the tenant from full use of the rented premises. This information can be used to determine the percentage of rent abatement which should be allowed. Our hearing today is limited to one hour. Additional time may be allowed upon request, but at the sole discretion of this committee. All of the proceedings today shall be recorded on tape. A copy of the tape recording will be supplied to anyone requesting it at the requestor's expense. Does anyone have any questions on that?
Nope.
Okay. If anyone is disruptive or fails to follow instructions, the committee has the right to end the meeting immediately and will make its decision based upon the information that has been received to that point. You will receive a written decision from the committee, and a copy will be mailed to your residences. You will have 10 days from the mailing of this written decision to file a written petition with the city clerk, asking this committee to reconsider its decision if you wish. Reconsideration will only be granted on the basis of a material error of factor law, an error in the calculation of the award amount. The party who wants reconsideration of the committee's decision will have to serve copies of the petition on the other parties. The filing of a petition to reconsider the decision will not suspend or delay the effective date of the original decision or order. You'll also have the right to seek a review of the decision of this committee by the circuit court within 30 days of the service of the decision by mail. More information for that will be included in the ordinance. The maximum total abatement authorized under the ordinance shall not exceed 95% of the periodic rental payment, except where premises have been vacated under an order of the Inspection and Zoning Department pursuant to Wisconsin law. With that, Mr. Hempsey, do you want to go ahead and present the facts of your case?
My case is that I know Ted's trying to get the stuff done, and I let him do it on his pace, and I know he's going to get it done. But our agreement we had a while ago is the inside, the stuff on the inside, most of that, me and him have agreement of me repairing, repairing some stuff in there, but his okay. The outer stuff, I let him come anytime he wants and fix that. So, I really have not much I should complain about, because I told him about the things, and I know he's been meaning to get over there and fix it. I know family problems and stuff can't come up to delay problems. I understand that. So, as I said, I know Ted's going to get the stuff fixed, and the stuff like painting and stuff like that, I'm getting done when I get back. I get carpeting laid already, so we're working on, between Ted, me, Ted, and Margaret, we're working on stuff for me to fix, that I can fix in the house, as long as it's up to their okay and standards. And some of the stuff, when I like buy for the house, they take it off my rent. So, we're working a good deal that way.
So, the work that you would perform as a tenant under an agreement with them is not work that would require licensed contractors to be used, correct? So, you're not doing things like plumbing and electrical and all that stuff?
No, no, no. I'm doing like the painting, just, you know, laying down a rug for the floor, and that's it.
So, the rent impairing violations that were noted in the notice included an issue with the kitchen floor, with the furnace, apparently, the condition of the bathroom shower curtain floor and bathtub, damaged waste stack in the basement, scrap material in the basement, smoke detectors missing, CO detectors.
While the smoke, if you don't mind me interrupting for a second there.
No, go ahead. It's a long list, so I guess I, we're, are you still living in the property right now?
Yeah, I'm still living there, but I'm still down in Milwaukee right now. I'm going to be back on the 15th. They got, they got the carbon monoxide detectors, and they got, they got all the smoke detectors put in. The basement is cleaned up. Some of the materials that were down there is for a train cable that I'm building, that I got the okay from Ted and Margaret to do. So, most of the stuff they've been compliant, like the furnace, they replaced it on their time. I don't push them. It's up to them when they got the time to get it fixed.
Okay. Committee members, do you have any questions for Daniel at all? Sure, go ahead, Tara.
Mr. Hempsey, this is Tara Alfonso. I'm the attorney for the city of Wausau.
Can you speak up a little bit, because it's hard to hear you through my phone?
Sure, sure. So, my name is Tara Alfonso, and I'm the attorney advising the committee on this. One of the violations that was listed as potentially rent abatable was the kitchen floor isn't repaired. Is that your understanding that you're fixing the kitchen floor, or is it your understanding the landlord's fixing the kitchen floor?
Well, me and Ted had that discussion once before. He's got the tiles, the tiles in the box downstairs. We've had that talk about it before. He wanted me to put it down, but I told him I'd rather have him there to make sure it's done the right way, because I've never done nonolian floors. I've done laminate floors, and I've done tile floors, but not nonolian.
Okay. Let's, okay.
So, that part, I'm leaving up to him.
I understand that. Let's move on to another one. There's a violation here that may be abatable that talks about a hole in the dining room ceiling shall be properly repaired and painted. Is that something that you agreed you were going to fix with the landlord, or is that something--
No, no. He agreed to fix that.
Okay, great, thanks.
He agreed to fix, get the, he agreed to fix, get the roof fixed, which they told me they have somebody that's going to be doing that, and they agreed that they are going to fix that hole in the ceiling.
Okay. Another violation that's on this list is the tile on the living room floor shall be removed and the floor made uniform and usable. Is that also something the landlord is supposed to fix, or you had offered to fix?
Okay, the tile on the living room floor, and I know what they're talking about, I told Ted. Ted wants that left there because of the, he only wants the carpeting to go up to the tile, because the room's 13, I'm correct, 13 feet, he said, wide, and that's why he put the carpeting there.
So, you're, you're saying--
He told me a couple of days ago, he wants, he wants that tile left there.
Okay, so are you, I just, my question's pretty simple and straightforward. Did you agree that you would ever repair the living room tile on the floor or carpet over that?
I would carpet, I said I would carpet over that, just lay the carpet over it.
So, you said you would put carpet over the living room tile?
Yes, because that's what we agreed on.
Okay.
Because I was going to put a little bit of that carpeting I have there by the front, by the front door tile, too.
Okay, and then my last--
But not--
My last question is about the dining room and the bedroom floors. Did you agree to fix dining room and bedroom floors, or is that something that the landlord is supposed to fix?
Me and him, we were, me, him, and Margaret were talking about that a couple of days ago. I told him I can get the laminate floor put in, as long as they, they give me the okay to go pick it up and put it in. Now, the bedroom floor's got carpeting. Both bedrooms have got carpeting now. We, I already agreed with them that I would put carpeting down in there, yeah.
Okay. Now, these things that you agreed that you would fix, that I've asked you about, are you required to fix those, or are you voluntarily fixing those?
I volunteered to help them get it fixed.
Okay.
I'm volunteering to fix it, help him get that fixed and looking nice again.
Why did you volunteer to fix that?
Because I want, I look at it as, I want it to be a looking nice home, and I know he's, he's up there, up there in age, and he can't do a lot of it. So, if I volunteer to help him get it done, then at least it relieves some of the stress and burden off of him.
And if you fix these things, or the things you have fixed, is he giving you a deduction off of your rent for these things?
Yeah, some, some things, yes. Like, I just, for the garage overhead door, just opened an opener, and Ted and Margaret agreed that you were taking money off my rent to pay, that they were paying me back by taking it off my rent for that opener for the garage. And anything, before I do anything in the house, I talk to them, and if they can go ahead and do it, I go ahead and do it. If they should go ahead and do it, just let me know the price, and I'll take it off your rent. We work at it that way.
Okay. Okay. And let me ask you another question. Is your lease with Mr. and Mrs. Bowman, is that in writing, or is it a month-to-month verbal lease?
It's a yearly.
And it's in writing?
I don't know what I have the lease with yet. I think-- I think they, I think they checked it all out and it's on training, yes.
Okay, okay. And I can ask them too and they can confirm that. And you pay $600?
Yeah, I, I can't see, could really tell you if it's writing or not. So that part is a question that I would need somebody who's tight to see and I'm not at home with the, with the lease.
Right. And your rent, you're paying $650 a month, right?
Yes.
And are you current on your rent?
Yes, I'm alwa, I always pay on time with them, with the rent.
And you're paid through, through January?
Yep, they, they're hap, they, they're happy every time I get the rent to them. I call them, like whenever I have the rent in the envelope at my house, I'll call them up. I say I have the rent. And nine, 99% of times when Margaret can get the chance, come from the store, she'll come down and pick it up. Sometimes Ted, if he's coming over to fix something, he'll pick up the rent. But otherwise, I'm over it for them until they're, they can come and get the rent.
Okay, thank you. I don't have anything else to ask you.
I have, I have just a couple. I have just a couple of questions. The, when was the last date that you occupied the home?
Uh, December 2nd. That's because I left on December 3rd and I've been up here for about a month.
Okay. Committee members, any other questions for the tenant? Go ahead Jim.
Are these agreements between the tenant and the landlord, are they in writing? So they won't be back with the problems in the future?
They're not in writing. Ted said he was going to get them to me in writing and that's why I've been waiting. But we've been talking about, I suggest we get it all in writing.
Okay, so currently they are not written agreements for the work that you're supposed to do?
No.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alder Peckham has his hand raised on Webex. Go ahead Pat.
Thank you. It seemed to me that when I read through the list, there were items like the furnace shall be replaced by a professional HVAC provider and there were plumbing problems that shall be repaired by a professional plumber. Where are we at with those items?
Okay, the furnace has been replaced. That's been replaced for almost two months now, about two months, yeah, two months ago because it got put in in November, I think it was ninth, ninth or 10th. Don't count me wrong, but I think it was one of those two days.
Okay.
And it's been put in since. The plumbing, it's just the bathroom drain backing up, which we're just putting, he's just putting Drano down there right now to see if it's unclogging.
That doesn't seem to be needing the requirement that inspections put on that compliance order. It said get it fixed, it didn't say throw some Drano down there.
And I think we can clarify that also when we have our witness from inspections over? So the plumbing work, other than some remedial action, has not been taken care of? The drain stack and, and whatever has been backing up in that shower is not, is not taken care of?
Yeah, the shower backs out, it drains slow, but it backs up. All the other, like the bathroom sink and the kitchen sink are fine with drainage. It's just the bathroom. And I've been working with him to try to get it fixed. And I've just been waiting for his time, you know, and I understand he's got so much, two other properties too to deal with. So I just go by, hey, he calls me and says, I'm coming over to do it. Fine, come on over, I'm home.
This, I guess I have a question as to the state of what's happening in that bathroom. What is backing up in that shower? Is it the gray water from the shower or is it sewage?
No, it's, whenever you have the shower running, the water just piles out. It drains, but it drains really, really slow when, after you take a shower, it takes a while for it to go down.
Okay. Okay, is it, Dawn, go ahead.
Is it Mr. Hempe? I question, how long have you lived at this address?
Um, I moved in at the, at the end of June, beginning of July because I, I did them a favor before I moved in and I cleaned the whole house out for them and got it so I can move from my old residence to there. And I started paying, I think I gave her a security deposit in July, end of, end of first month rent in July. Yeah, something like that. And I cleaned the whole entire house for them. Didn't even ask nothing for it. I did it as volunteer work for them. All they did is get the dumpster, which I asked them to do, and I cleaned the entire house and garage for them.
I would say you've been an outstanding renter. I certainly wouldn't have put up with this and especially after I read all the problems. Obviously, these problems were there when you moved in and I'm surprised that you have put up and tolerated with this for this length of time. Thank you.
Additional questions for the, for the tenant? Okay, so we'll then conclude the tenant's testimony. Next, we'll bring up our representative from Inspections and Zoning, Adam Melzon. Adam, if you could come up to the mic and talk to us about your observations at this property when you were there.
Hi, my name is Adam Melzon. I work for the City of Wausau. I'm a property inspector since March of 2019. I do have some photographs and some letters from the inspections department.
Okay.
Did you want me to bring those up?
Yes, because we'll actually review those as you're going through. And so, I guess, give us a sense of, you know, what was happening at the property when you visited it to inspect as we're going through the photos here?
Sure. So my first look inside the property was October 22nd of 2021. Some of the things that stood out to me, that visit were the flooring. The flooring throughout the house was not in great shape. Our code says that kitchen and bathroom floors need to be impervious and there is some problem with the kitchen floor. The floor tiles busted up, not terribly. Though, the major issue that I found at that visit was the hole in the roof in the dining room.
Is that this photo here?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, that's under, I got that with the roof and interior ceiling pictures. In the pictures, in the pictures, you can also see the, the roof is in pretty rough shape from the exterior photographs I took.
And how many times have you been back to the property to re-inspect it?
I was, I came back on November 11th after the furnace was replaced. So I give, I give the property owner credit for bringing in a licensed professional to put in a furnace. So that was, that was done, like Mr. Hempe said. So that is, that is great. Aside from the roofing and the interior ceiling issue, one of the other things that Daniel didn't mention was on the plumbing side, I do have a picture of the other plumbing stack. There's two stacks in that basement. The, the photo I'm providing is on the western side of the basement and that is the plumbing stack that I asked to get repaired.
Okay. And that work has not been taken care of?
Correct. When I revisited in November, I do have a picture from that visit showing the stack not repaired.
Okay. And it looks like, at least in the one photo as they are going around, that is the stack that you had photographed. It looks like it had been attempted to be sealed with silicone or something, is that?
Correct, yeah, the silicone on the cleanout and then some other type of sealing agent underneath the, the coupling there.
Looked like some kind of putty or something on that. And then you also noted an electrical violation with a light fixture?
That's correct. There is a electrical box in the ceiling in the basement that needs a cover and then the electrical, well, the light is hanging from the box to in another location in the basement.
Okay. And those open junction boxes have not yet been replaced?
Not to my knowledge. Like I said, I've only been in the house twice, so when I was there on the 11th, those items were not repaired at that time.
Okay.
Yeah.
Committee members, do you have any questions for inspections? Tara, do you have any questions?
Yes, thank you. You made a second inspection and that was November 11th, you said?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. And have you made any other inspections since November 11th?
Not on the interior. I have driven by the property and I've looked at the property from the alleyway though.
Okay. And the roof has not been done?
Not, not to my knowledge.
Can we just go, your notice of 1022, just so that I can be clear. So violation number one you indicate is the kitchen floor.
Correct.
So when you went on the 11th, was that done?
No.
No. However, you did give them till the 16th, correct?
Correct.
And the second one, the furnace replaced, that's violation number two, that, when you went on the 11th, that was corrected?
Yeah, they did, they did a nice job.
Okay, so that was corrected. Okay. And then the, the number four violation, that's down in the basement, so that's the only plumbing issue, is one in the basement?
Correct. Daniel did mention that the drain was slow in the bathroom. When I was there, he had no strainer in the bathtub and no stopper and I just told him, you know, a strainer is a pretty cheap fix to help keep material from going down the Upon looking at the drain stack there in the basement, it didn't look like there was any failures with it, perhaps just a, just a slow drain at that time. And my thinking was if he were, the property owner, if the property owner were to bring a licensed plumber and he could address that, a slow drain, you know, pretty, pretty simple with the repair of the, the stack on the west side of the, the basement.
And with respect to violation number five, with the electrical thing, it is just in the basement, the problem?
Correct.
And you said it's, it's, the light is hanging there and then another light needs a cover?
Another, another box needs a cover.
Okay.
Yeah.
So there is no issue as far as bare or exposed wires or, looking at our chart, that he hasn't lost electricity or he doesn't have over fused or under fused circuits? It's just those two items?
Just those two items and I can't say for sure if there's any exposed bare wire or not. Sometimes there can be with an open box.
Not, not that you've seen though, you didn't.
Not that I've seen. The wire, the wires were in the box.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
And then smoke detectors, how many were missing?
So they, they actually did get the smoke detectors installed, one on each floor and a CO detector, one on each floor.
And were those done by the compliance date of October 31st?
Um, I'm not, I'm not sure on that actually. I think they were a little bit later, but they, they did get them in. When I was there on the 11th, they were there.
And when you went on the 11th, the other violations with respect to the dining room and living room floors still weren't corrected?
That, that's correct, yeah.
And I guess the other thing, I guess all these floor things, the, what is this? This is the tile on the living room floor, the dining room and bedroom floors and the hole in the ceiling. Those weren't done on the 11th?
No, none of that, none of that stuff was corrected. You know, if, if the, if the tenant is able to repair some of these items himself, fantastic. But when I was there, none of that was, was repaired.
Right. Okay. And do I have anything else for you? And the copy of the notice you gave to Chairperson Rasmussen of your notice is a true and correct copy of that notice?
Yes, it is.
And who was the complainant that brought these matters to your attention? Was it the tenant?
I believe it was the tenant who made it, made a call into our office on October 22nd and I actually included that complaint for Ms. Rasmussen there. It's in there.
Yep.
Okay, I don't have any other questions for you, thank you.
Looks like that started as heat not working properly, gas smell in the home?
Correct.
Okay. Well, you're saying that was repaired by the compliance date?
Yes, ma'am. They, they brought in Four Seasons and they, they did a real nice job.
Okay, thank you.
Jim, go ahead with your question.
I have a question about the hole in the ceiling. Did you notice was the insulation proper past that hole in the ceiling or was the insulation open and no insulation in that area? Was, was there water intrusion? Was there any mold buildup?
So I included in the photos, looks like maybe Tara has them right now, but there is actually a picture of some plastic bins on the floor. Those bins on the floor were to collect the rainwater that comes through the roof. So water was definitely infiltrating through the roof. The tenant was trying to, you know, capture the, the rainwater as best as he could. There is insulation in that roof. If you can, you can see it in the photograph, there was cellulose insulation that had gotten wet, so.
I saw the photo, I'm just wondering how.
Yeah.
No ceiling can hold up cellulose and keep the place insulated properly and.
Right.
Any idea if you saw mold?
I, you know, we don't have any methods at City of Wausau Inspections for identifying mold, but I didn't, I did not see anything that resembled mold.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Committee members, any additional questions for inspections? Okay. And we'll conclude the testimony from our inspections witness. And next up, we have, let me switch to my screen here. Next up, we'll have Ted and Margaret Bowman. And so your microphone is on. And so your microphone is on, on your table. Our experience with those is that you have to have them pretty close to you to be able to be heard. They're not super sensitive like these other ones are. So you can go ahead and, uh, um, offer your response to what you've heard here. And, uh, then the committee may have some questions for you as well.
Sure. Do you have a list that's been written down that I can just make sure I cover them all?
Sure, we'll bring you a copy of the notice.
Let's see if I have an extra one. Or Adam, do you have an extra copy of the notice? I think mine's all written on.
I have a bad case of CRC. Some people call it CRS, but I don't do CS.
Here, I found one, Adam. I can give it to him.
I have the one from the file also.
I'll take some of them that I can remember.
Okay, well, she's going to bring you a copy of the notice that went out?
And can you please speak closer than like the, uh?
Pull it, pull it right up to you because it's not real sensitive.
Thank you.
Even a little closer.
I'd like to, uh, go ahead and start with the hole in the roof and the insulation problem. I've had two different people come out to try to fix that. Now, the last tenant was there for a year, paid zero rent and left that place a pigsty. Now whoever put that piece of board across it, I have no idea. Prior to that, I don't think there's probably anybody in here that remembers a fella named Snape that worked for the, uh, garbage company, LB. He lived there for over 10 years. And, uh, I gave him a real cut in his rent. And I mean a bigger cut than I gave Dan. I gave Dan $250 a month cut in his rent. Hmm? No, 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 no. I gave bigger than that. And, and Dan is a very smart fellow. He wants to learn to do things, but, uh, he's, uh, what'd you call him? Something blind. He's, yeah, uh, and technically, uh, so he can do close work. I had him, uh, the last person that was in there, took it as their personal property and I was not allowed on it. Our son, and you'll have in the police record somewhere, went over to, uh, submit the first eviction notice, which was handwritten. Now, the one that Dan's got, you can find it on, uh, your Wisconsin legal forms or something like that. It's 15 pages long. And, uh, anyway.
So.
Yeah.
I have, I have a question, I guess. Um, there maybe there's a, a lack of clarity on the prior tenants, but. So you had had a tenant that had lived there 10 years. And now was that tenant receiving a reduction in his rent for conditions in the property that were subpar?
Much so. Now, I bought this house nearly 40 years ago, back when they, uh, had an elderly project where they would go out and fix houses, bring them up to standard, electricity, plumbing, et cetera, et cetera. Okay? So it started out in some pretty good shape.
Okay. So, but the tenant that lived there for 10 years was receiving a reduction in the rent for conditions in the property that were subpar?
Yeah, we owned a little store and his part was to, he, he was a train guy, okay? And, uh, his part.
Okay. So I guess, I'm having trouble following that. The work in the store, I mean, if there was work done in the store, is actually irrelevant to this hearing. What I'm asking you is the tenant that lived there for 10 years.
Yes.
Did that tenant receive a reduction in the rent for conditions in the property that needed repair?
There were no conditions that needed to be repaired, but he was supposed to take care of it. His reduction, uh, that house today would rent for $800. We gave him a reduction down to 350. And, uh.
So was that reduction in the rent because he worked for you, like a salary for the work?
No, 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 no.
Then why was his rent cheaper than average?
Yeah, he was a friend.
Okay. But the reduction that that person received was not for conditions that were needing repair?
Correct.
Okay. So then the last tenant who had lived there for.
That is, uh, though when the, uh, the leak started, and, uh, he just put a bucket under it. We've had two different people out there to try to stop it, okay? I know where it is. I was a contractor for many years and, uh, I roofed the backside of the house myself.
Okay.
College, I put roofing on. I know about as much as anybody does. I did not put the aluminum roof cap on it because I was getting ready, you know, to go and do the other side.
Okay.
And then it would have gone down and that, that's where that leak is. We had at least two, uh, people know how to fix it, come out there and it still leaks. Well.
Okay. So then you had a tenant who lived there for a year but did not pay their rent? And you evicted that person?
Yeah, and they tore the house.
Oh.
Okay. And so that person left it in some level of disrepair?
Yes.
Yes.
When did that person leave?
Well, shortly after we gave him his, um, eviction notice.
No, he didn't get out right away.
No, he didn't get out.
No.
The boss, the boss, the boss. He called the Wausau Police Station and had him escorted away and filed judgment against him for, I don't know about, four different things. And one of them was for trespassing.
Okay.
And it's.
Well, and I guess the, the, the reason I ask that question is I'm trying to establish how long of a period of time elapsed between the time that person moved and this tenant came?
Oh, goodness gracious.
This tenant says he moved in in June of 2021?
Yeah, this, this guy moved out probably uh, just before it started to really get cold.
No, they, remember, they, they were out sometime between, um, December the 25th and January the 1st. And they left a live Christmas tree on with lights on and no water.
Okay, so is that January of 2021?
Yeah.
Are we in '22? I lose time. Yeah.
Yeah.
So between January of 2021 and June of 2021, when this tenant moved in, was that house empty or occupied?
Empty. It was in such bad shape. We had the house for sale because, uh, COVID for, uh, has just ruined our business, okay? We needed some money. So we had a regular real estate site like this out in the front yard. And the guy kept taking it down. And, uh, then when I, uh, I lose my train of thought. But anyway, uh, they moved out and we don't know when. And the way I found out about that is, uh, the truant officer from Wausau West School district, which is just down the street from, uh, this house, called me. And he said, you know, we've got a problem with this house. Do you, do you own it? I said, yeah. He says, well, we think we smell gas and, uh, there's nobody there. So they called the fire department. Fire department got in and, uh, there's no gas there. Okay? The house stunk that bad. But anyway, uh, that was the first time I found out about it.
And this was in December or January after this person had left?
Oh, goodness gracious.
It was sometime in January, but the first part in January.
So between, between January of 2021 and June of 2021, when you re-rented the home, what did you do to fix everything that was wrong?
We were so.
What repairs did you make?
We were so messed up, we don't know what to act to do.
There's a lot of stuff that we, we cleaned up and had to throw away.
As a matter of fact, the, uh, partners brought their largest roll-on dump truck out and we filled it up.
Okay.
Now, uh, they considered that house as theirs. And, well, no, you know, it was starting to get cold. He called and said, there's no pilot light on in the furnace. Well, then I should have gone through this call. There are not pilot lights in furnaces anymore. So I went over and got it started, found that there was a, uh, about a, a $10 art that could be replaced. But so that they would have heat, I jumpered that. And it had nothing to do with other than smelling or getting it, you know, something getting too warm or something like that.
So you were in the home when you did that work?
That was for the other tenants.
Right. But you were aware of the condition of the property during that time?
No, you wouldn't let me come upstairs. You're just in the downstairs.
We had to have a police escort to check out the house.
Yeah.
Whenever.
And then, uh,
Okay. Pull the microphone a little bit closer to you. They're having trouble hearing you on the recording.
The, uh, uh, tenant that was there for about 10 years, oh, he was so proud when he got to 70. Well, he died at 72. And his daughter knew that we were going to sell the house. She had it cleaned up carpets, the whole works. And, uh, we, we had quite a few years of renting and we found it much cheaper to get them to where they don't want to live there anymore and get gone than it is to get an attorney and go through this rigmarole of trying to get them out of there. Now that may sound crazy, but it's the truth.
So are you saying that to create a condition where the tenant is uncomfortable enough there to leave on their own? Is that what you're saying?
That's what I'm saying. So I wouldn't say, the only way we found out that they weren't there is when the officer in the pharmacy got inside and he says, there's nobody living here.
They, they had dogs in the house. They allowed the dogs to poop in the house.
Ma'am, can you use the microphone, please, here? That way, that way we can hear you. Thank you.
Now, but this really doesn't have anything to do with Dan, but the people.
Well, that's, that's what we need to focus on is we're trying to focus on the condition of the property when the current tenant moved in. And so, you know, what was happening there when the one-year guy lived there, I guess is less relevant. But the, the point I'm trying to make and what I was trying to ask you is the home was, to clarify, the home sat empty for approximately five or six months before this tenant moved in.
Probably less than that.
And, and you said from December or January of 2021 to June of 2021 was when he moved in? And during that time, other than throwing out garbage or abandoned property, you didn't make any repairs?
We had to clean the house out. I mean, I mean, we, we cleaned it up as much as we could.
Okay. So, but given the circumstance that existed there with the leaking roof and the, this, given the situation there.
Yeah.
Why did you re-rent the home before it was fixed in June?
Because Dan's dad.
Pull the microphone up, please.
Dan's dad was going to fix it. Okay? I'm in my 80s. I don't get on the roof anymore. So, uh, it didn't get fixed. Now, uh.
And Dan had someone living there with him that, that, um, tried to fix it or said he fixed it and we paid him for it, but it, then it started leaking again.
Yeah.
But that was later that it started leaking.
So this is the roof you're talking about?
We're talking about.
So Dan's, so the tenant's dad was going to fix the roof?
Yes.
What about the rest of it? There's, there's 12 or 13 violations here.
Okay. The carpets were cleanable, but they took them out because they wanted to re-floor it.
Who took them out?
Uh, Dan, Dan and his family and friends. The, uh, we were a little misread, uh, misrepresented when, uh, I questioned Dan about some of this stuff and, oh yeah, he's got all kinds of friends. He's got all kinds of friends. But he doesn't have the friends he needs. Okay? That's, uh, one thing that, uh, we have a history of doing. We have two boys helping us now. Uh, I don't know if you've ever been at Hobby Connection, but go on to hobbyconnect.com and you'll see a beautiful layout downstairs that has not been taken care of for over three years. We went nearly four years without any income. Rothschild officers came to the door and said, you can't be open. So what do we do? She just retired. And we relied upon the income from the store. We had four warehouses. Two of them were not paying one penny of rent. The third and the fourth one were doing it when they could. When, you know, I've always been self-employed except when I was in the Air Force. I didn't get a stimulus check. I see this advertised all the time on the, on the computer. Apply for this $4,000. We haven't gotten anything. So therefore, that's why it takes us a while to, uh, another part of this thing, that I hate to get off on is different things. But you know what's sitting off the west coast and the east coast?
Well.
Carb go shit.
We need to sit, we need to stay with this hearing on items that are relevant to the hearing, so.
They're going to be taken care of. Okay? Dan and I discussed this, but I tell you, uh, Dan has got a good, good mind. He just doesn't see, see well.
Well, and I guess that.
We will get it done.
That, that's part of it. You know, I guess I, the, the question I have is now you apparently had made, it sounds like verbal agreements with the tenant and the tenant's father to do some of this work already. The tenant apparently has some degree of visual impairment.
Visual impairment?
Visual impairment? Tenant has some degree of visual impairment?
Yes. Yes, yes, he's legally blind.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so, but your expectation is that he will take on this list of work?
We're taking it on together. We're taking it on together. The window sills at the alley was listed in here somewhere. Dan cut them. And I think he painted them white. I told him, do not install them. I want to install them to make sure they're installed right. So little by little. And, uh, one of Dan's favorite things is, you know, we got to work at my speed. And then he's talking about his speed. Well, my speed, I'm good for about two hours a day. And anyway, so we, uh, we do a lot of talking and looking and thinking. And he's got dreams for that house. We were in there a couple of days ago. Of course, they're going to be painting, uh, within the next couple of weeks on the inside of the house. Okay? And entirely, I mean.
So even though the ceilings have not been repaired, you're painting?
That spot is not that big, but it will be taken care of. There's no on roof now, okay? I know what I put over the top of it and probably where it's coming from. And, uh.
So your expectation is that the tenant would continue to occupy this property when he returned? So your expectation is that the tenant would continue to occupy this property when he returns?
He wants to.
With, with the, in the, in its current state?
Oh, I mean, to be worked on.
Yeah, 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 yeah. And he says, he's a real good dry waller. Well, he's going to prove it to me because I know how to fix that hole and fix it right. Okay?
Okay, well. Committee members, Tara, do you have any additional questions for the landlord? Committee members? Okay.
I, I have a couple.
Sure.
Do you have a written lease with Mr. Humpy?
Yes, uh.
Yes. Yes. Okay, it's a yes or no question. Yes, you have a written lease. What is the amount of rent that he's supposed to pay in his written lease?
Six fifty.
Okay. Now, now you said he got a $250 cut in his rent. What does that mean?
That means that if we had sold that house, which we wanted to do so we could get some money in our coffers, or rented. If you check on the properties over the Wausau West area, uh, between there and, uh, whatever it is, you'll find, and, and I, uh, I am a former real estate broker, so I know how to figure out what things are going for now. And they're going from $800 up to $1,200.
Okay, so to simplify this, you think your property is worth $800 to $850 a month rented? So you think you're giving him a break on his rent by renting this for 650? Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. And he moved into it in, in a sort of a, a bad condition?
Yeah, I heard, yeah.
And you just said, if you fix it, I'll give you more of a cut in rent, right?
No, that's what the cut in the rent was for.
For him to do work on the property?
Yes.
So he, you had him move into this place?
Yes.
Telling him he could run it for 650, but he has to do an undetermined amount of work to fix it up?
No.
No, he and I will fix it up. Dan can't see more than 12 inches in front of his face or so, and, and, you know, in close things. So I don't want him doing anything that I can't be there with him to do, but I'm going to show him how to do it. Now, this, that's.
I, I think that's good. I, can I go back and ask? Mr. Humpy, are you still there?
Yes.
Okay, I, I want to ask.
Yes, I am.
I want to ask you a question. Were there carpets on the floors in the dining room and the other room bedrooms when you moved in?
Yes, and they were, and I'm going to tell you, those carpets dumped my cat here, cat pissed. The one in my, uh, one office off of the dining room, that had cat, that had shit stained on the carpet. That, I told him I was tearing that out because of the feces on that carpet.
Okay, and did he, did he give you permission to take those out?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, he did.
Okay, now here's my other question. You moved in, were you aware this place was in bad condition?
I didn't know it was this bad, but I look at it as my own house.
Okay, because I'm just, I'm a little puzzled. You filed for rent abatement, but it sounds like you and the landlord have all these deals and agreements. So you want your rent abated until the time he fixes this up?
Uh, if we can get it fixed in a decent manner, yeah.
Well, you know what this hearing is about is you've asked to have your rent reduced by a certain amount until such time as the property is made tidy again. Do you understand that?
Yeah.
Okay. That's it, I have no further questions.
Okay, committee members, do you have any additional questions? Okay, if not, then we'll conclude the testimony of the landlord. This committee, um, with regard to this matter deliberates in closed session. Um, so we will, um, take a motion to move into closed session to engage in that deliberation. Would someone read the closed session motion? Go ahead, Jim. Oh. Get, Loz is going to bring you one.
Now, if, uh, after your closed session and so on, as the inspector is showing some photos, I have photos prior to, I mean, where he took over and that sort of thing, yeah, just to give you an idea.
So you have photo evidence that you brought today?
Well, they're on my phone, but, uh, I don't have pictures big like those.
Okay.
You know, the, the four pieces of floor tile in the kitchen that were missing. When I went in, uh, the first two things we did was on the inside and that was to get the plumbing going. Okay? Uh, the, uh, pipe that comes down out of the kitchen sink and goes over, should go up to the other sink. They had it going into a five-gallon bucket and that five-gallon bucket has been run over, you know, a number of times. That loosens the tile.
So the, the they you refer to as the prior tenant?
Yes.
Okay.
And then the other one about where the caulking is, uh, getting the plumbing clean out from the kitchen sink to the main caused me to have to pound a hole into the side of the, uh, the downspout or, uh, you know, the, the downward pipe. Now, I have a huge wrench and I broke it.
So you performed the work that caused the damage to the stack? And not a plumber? The drain stack? You performed, so the opening in the drain stack?
I put that.
With the putty around the edge? You had caused that breakage trying to clean it?
And it had already been plugged up with some kind of black gooey stuff, okay? So we knew that that had to come out of there, but it's so old, uh, that, uh, it, it broke.
Did you call, did you contact? At, at any point in that process, did you contact a plumber?
No.
All right, um, we'll go ahead with the closed session motion and, go ahead, Jim.
I move we go into closed session pursuant to section 19.85 sub 1 sub A of the Wisconsin statutes for the purpose of considering the following, deliberating concerning a case which was the subject of any juris judicial or quasi-judicial, uh, trial or hearing before the governmental body.
Okay, we have a motion for closed session. Do we have a second? Second by Herbst. We'll do a roll call vote for closed session. McAlini?
Aye.
Wadinsky?
Aye.
Herbst?
Aye.
I'll vote aye as well. Alder Peckham being virtual, cannot participate, votes aye but cannot participate in closed session.
Yeah, well, I can't plow you in there.
No, you can't, you can't. But we'll be back shortly. Um, so we will reconvene in open session after our deliberation and present the findings on this, on this hearing.
So I'm good to go or?